Yeah, come up to the guest table.
I think we had two folks from Met Council.
Yeah. I just came to watch.
You believe he did that?
No.
On brand for me. Schmidt's not here, sweetie.
Excellent.
You come down here unless you're staying for the whole meeting.
Um.
Oh, maybe not. You're welcome to stay. All are welcome.
Don't stay.
Go home.
Eat dinner.
It's Bachelor night, so my wife is gonna be at the neighbor's house.
Okay.
With her girlfriends, so I've got to worry. Kids are at grandma's.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah, we've been piloting that program. Kids are gonna go to grandma's house on the days that we work because both of us get home around 6:30, seven anyway.
Yeah.
So by that time, it's like, okay, let's grab something to eat and put the kids to bed.
Yeah.
So we didn't really spend that much time with them anyway on a work day, unfortunately, so.
Makes sense. Lori, I saw your husband at the Victoria Lions tournament.
Yes.
And. Very nostalgic going there.
Yeah.
I got out. Oh, were you playing?
No, god, no.
I thought you went out, like.
No, but it's easy to fall into fun habits there, right?
It is 5:30 and we gotta have the agenda. So I will call this work session to order from Monday, July 21st. First, we have the city managers' report in there.
Mayor Council, if you're okay, I'd like to push the city managers' report to the end so we can, just in case we get our guests from Met Council, we could also get Deputy Nelson on the road.
Sounds good.
It sounds like they don't want you here.
Okay, any council requests? Okay, now it's up to you, Deputy Nelson, Carver County Sheriff's Department. What's going on in Carver?
Excellent. You know, for the month of June, not a whole lot. As you see in my weekly reports, you know, we kinda average around that, you know, maybe five or six report calls most weeks types of things. And when I say report calls, it's the ones that were required to be reports on type A defenses, criminal matters, and sometimes we'll make reports for things that maybe require a bit more explaining, even if it's not a criminal matter, just might be a little bit more questionable. Nothing really stands out there from the June report. Our traffic numbers, I believe, were a little bit better than our prior month, so I'm happy to see that. I would still get on my team a little bit about getting those numbers up. I'm partly to blame for that, too. Our numbers could be better, in my opinion. I think we can get on, less JCP traffic stops, more collector streets, that type of stuff. I've been really trying to get on the guys about getting downtown here and getting some stops in front of things, being a little bit more visible for our local population. Steamboat Day is planning. I'm continuing that still. I'm in conversations with a number of people, just trying to finalize what we need from the sheriff's office. With that coming up quickly, we wanna make sure that we have our shifts posted so we get that adequately covered.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I didn't receive any direct touch of truck or vehicle fare feedback, other than from my deputy saying, you know, hey, went well. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything.
I stopped by. It looked great, but you guys were overshadowed by a fire truck that had to leave in the middle of the event.
Yeah, I believe Logan was there after his shift, so I don't think he had to leave. So at least he got to stay and be present for the whole event, so.
Apparently leaving is a big tall.
Yeah, you get to turn them, yeah.
Yeah.
I have kind of talked with a number of city staff, mostly some public works guys regarding vandalism and some other issues at our parks. Most recently, Lyons Park had some small graffiti and some fireworks jarring. Doesn't sound like there's any cameras up there, and there maybe hasn't been for some time. Is that, that's something that would really help us, you know, work forward and try to identify some of the culprits that are maybe doing this. I know, is that Ironwood or? Yeah, Ironwood Park is also another kind of hotspot for some activity that having some cameras out there would be especially helpful for our investigative process.
Are you having the sheriffs in our town then check all the parks? Because Lyons has always been a hotspot because of the way the shelter is tucked back there like that and the amount of homes that are pretty close right there. I mean, but Bluff is also another one that's tucked back there, too.
Yeah, they're all unfortunately pretty well off the beaten path or off the road from at least a drive-by. You actually have to enter those parks, so something I've definitely passed on to my two night guys, and I hope that they're getting after that a little bit.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Can you remind me why we don't have a camera?
It's primarily access to technology. A number of years ago, we tried a cellular-based technology and it wasn't reliable. And so that, with the combination of the cost, we just continued that.
When you say a number of years ago, how many?
Two.
Okay.
Can I just, if we wanna look into this, like, we have cameras and there are ones that, like, we bought on Amazon and I think it's like $300 or $400 for like three of them or whatever. And you, if, there's no payment after that. You just monitor and it comes to your phone. Like, you just have the app on your phone, and we don't pay like a yearly, a monthly thing for it. It's hooked up to your home's Wi-Fi. Um, yes, it is hooked up to Wi-Fi. So that's the issue. Yep.
So is it worth running out there? I mean, I'm sure the city has some subscriber with each and three carriers. Cause there has been some improvement done in, that might make that work better. Before we go buy anything, I can show you how to put each carrier's phone into a test mode and that'll give you the DB level at that site. That should give you some, a pretty good idea of what to expect. Now, I mean, just.
I don't know what DB level means.
Sorry, sorry.
Visible?
Yes. Now, what the, what the actual signal strength is versus, you know, the bars on your phone.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the engineering information about what's at present in that site for all the carriers.
Well, it could be, this is a topic that Andrew and I haven't connected on yet, so this was, Chad Shell kind of worked on that, so I think with Andrew on board, the two of us and Paul can talk about some alternatives and maybe take another swing at it, so.
And the only reason I bring that up is I know that the carriers have added capacity and spectrum of those sites.
I mean, we do have fiber into the wellhouse in Lyons, I'm imagining, right?
Talking about Lyons, are we talking about community?
Lyons. Probably, yeah. Or fiber. So there's probably a way to do that. We just haven't worked soft it.
And it hasn't been egregious by any means, but it just, you know, small vandalism over time, maybe it just kind of increases and maybe it's the same people doing it every time.
We have, we have had it over the past years, yeah, a lot. So and I'm wondering, usually if I'm thinking, can we get another wave of it right before school starts again? And it's when school's out and I think right before school starts. So if you could just maybe let your deputy or your folks know again to make their swings through the park locations.
Yeah, I think, I think these last couple that I have gotten were weekend hours, too, so, weekends. Couple gravel pit calls that I've gotten recently, actually. I haven't gotten any for a while, but we've got some trespassers at the gravel pit again that Mueller's just let us know about, so we've been trying to track those down as we receive them, but that just continues to be a bit of a hotspot for explorers of the area, so.
Young explorers, from what the Facebook posts made it sound like.
Yeah, exactly. And most of them, yeah, and credit to Mueller's, they have a really nice camera on their dredge where most of the kids congregate at, and it's just, I mean, it's like the one at the gas station, which is a pure face shot as you walk up to the. Unfortunately, though, like, it's still like this process of trying to figure out whose kid is this.
Yeah.
So a lot of times we get some help from the community and other people, you know who listens. But they're taking it pretty seriously. They're issuing citations, criminal trespass citations for people that we do identify, so.
While we're on this topic, Fred, I'd like to, in a future meeting, get an update on, I believe we have cameras in the walking path with the underpass on JCP.
Do not.
I thought we did something because we really sought improvement. Like, for a while, there was some vandalism in there.
That was really a specific challenge. We got costs and it was, I think, in the neighborhood of like $20,000.
Okay.
Specifically because there, there was like an antenna relay system and they couldn't get line of sight.
Okay.
So.
But maybe then that type of update. And I thought we actually had cameras in there.
Nope.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't really have anything else. If anybody else sees anything in my reports or had seen anything.
I have a question for you. So would you, are the, are they going up at Hartwell?
I.
I mean, and we'll say, come crossing specifically, it seems like there's been more coming in.
We've been pretty busy there lately. It usually.
Hi, come on in.
Yeah, we've taken a number of calls there lately. It usually revolves around certain residents, like maybe somebody who has some bad interactions with us moves in and then for a, you know, a short while there, we might have a number of contacts with them until the situation either gets resolved, fixed, or they get moved out or something.
Okay.
Nothing that has been having, there's been a couple arrests there in the last month, but nothing jumps out at me as being like a really crazy call or anything that wasn't really alarming. It was pretty run-of-the-mill type things, so. But yeah, definitely one of our higher call volume areas.
I have a couple questions. Earlier this year, we put a lot of thought into parking permits. Have you written any tickets for people parking in the parks or parking on the street for full days?
So I've never, I personally can't recall writing a ticket, or actually, I did write one or two. My memory's a bit foggy. I know I warned a lot of people as soon as it came out. It gave me a little bit more teeth as far as like, hey, time to move, here's your warning, and next time's the ticket. I can actually say that to people now and be confident that I can follow through with it. So I think it's gotten a number of people to at least move their cars when I've requested that. It, you know, it comes up, people report it and let us know, hey, this car's been here for a long time. Okay, I'll come by, I'll warn it, and then I can actually follow through on the tag if I need to. As far as parks go, I haven't gotten any calls about parks. I did go after a lot of cars at the Metro Transit Station right away. I know that was kind of a hotspot. We had some long-term people parking there and I actually towed a few cars out of there, too, so. But as of like other guys, I know a few other guys have written some parking citations, but it hasn't really been.
Okay, great.
A lot of self-generated stuff. It's more, the ordinance has really helped us more with like citizen complaints side of things because when people do complain in the past, it was a lot of like, sorry, like, we can ask them to move, but we don't really have anything to follow through with here.
Yeah, I think car stations where I notice them the most. And I'm not driving through there at 3:30 in the morning, so I don't know if they're gone by that time. My other question was, you mentioned your watching speed, and thank you for that. But I think, like, and just to reiterate what you said, I think folks know the conditions where they live, so we get a lot of folks, especially on the collector streets or the busier streets, but Mountain Hill, Spring Creek Drive, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, like, you name it. So it's appreciated even. I'll look.
Yeah, Fourth Street can be difficult at times, just with kind of the general curbs of it and where cars are coming and how we have to deliver. Sixth Street's always, I mean, if I want traffic stops, Sixth Street's gonna give them to me. There's people who go 40 miles an hour on that all the time, unfortunately. No matter how many times I hide around the corner by the block wall, so.
I saw you there.
I'm only going 31.
So get her for 31 this time, I believe.
Definitely still something, definitely keeping an eye on it. But I, yeah, I've reminded some of the other guys, like, hey, JCP stops are good, but also get in on some of those actual city streets, too, so.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Enjoy your night.
Excellent. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, up next, we have the future bus transit discussion with Metro Transit. Is there, if you're kicking it off?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. So I'd like to welcome Charles Carlson, the Executive Director with Metropolitan Transit Services, Transportation Services, and Bradley Bobbitt, a Senior Planner, also with Met Council. So just a little bit of background for every, or actually, before we get into that, just so Charles and Bradley know everybody in the room. Kristy, would you mind starting off and just go around introducing ourselves?
My name's Kristy Mock and I'm a City Council member.
My name is Courtney Johnson. I'm the mayor. Welcome, Carmen.
Andrew Simmons, Public Services Director.
Lori Sayer, one of the other council members.
Kaila Pascal, Council Member.
Eric Perschmann, Council Member, and I also sit on the Southwest Transit Board.
Okay.
Lynn Shuvi, Finance Director.
Vicky Sunziden, City Clerk.
All right, so just kind of before I turn it over to Charles and Bradley, just wanted to kind of get a little bit of a brief background of where we've been at with transit. So since 2015, the city's operated with Southwest Transit operating bus service to areas of Minneapolis. That's, it started out as a federal grant for operations. It became de-federalized, but Metro Transit has been involved in kind of how that's been put together frankly, for the last decade, based on where we're seeing grant funds going. We're expecting to conclude service for grant-operated service, for bus service. So this is part of an ongoing conversation. Remember, Aaron Smith was at the last work session, kind of setting the stage for this. We're having Metro Transit come out here tonight to kind of provide what I call a kind of a book report or kind of a research project of what they do and how they do it. And then our, kind of the third part of this is bringing out Southwest Transit and talking about what they do so that the city council set up to make some long-term decisions as it relates to transit. And so Aaron and I have had a conversation with Bradley and Charles related to this. So the outline here tonight, the council can take this in any direction that you want to as the discussion continues. But what we've asked Charles and Bradley to talk about is, one, an overview of the services that are provided at the metro area by Metro Transit, and then, two, how that intersects with a history and overview of what's called opdults or suburban rate providers. So not just Southwest Transit, but there's big Minnesota Valley, Burnsville, et cetera. Have different Plymouth, have different service models. The background, the kind of financial backbone of the Transit Taxi District, how that works, kind of some basics of the financing piece for the viability of future bus service in Carver. And then finally, the viability, I mean, opportunities related to microtransit. So that's the Southwest Prime of this area, but there are other models that are being explored throughout the metro. And then finally, any questions at the council I have? So with that, I'll turn it over to Charles and Bradley. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. Glad to be here. We're glad we were second on the agenda because we left Minneapolis at 4:15.
Did you take 2:12?
When we left, it said seven minutes extra and then it turned out to be 39 minutes extra.
Oh, yeah.
But we're here and just in time, so thanks for having us. So yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about all of, all those various things, but, you know, I think, I have some notes for myself. This could become more of a memo for you at some point, but figured we'd kind of explore this a little bit through conversation first. So within the Met Council, there are two transit operating divisions. One is Metro Transit and the other is called Metropolitan Transportation Services, and that's where we're from, is the second division. In that division, we do contracted transit service. So we operate microtransit in the Metro Transit Service area. We operate Metro Mobility. We operate Transit Link, which is the service that serves Carver that we'll talk about. We also, in a separate role within MTS, serve as the planning organization for transportation in the cities. So we're the federally designated planning organization that does work to manage the region's long-range transportation plan. We assemble a list of projects that gets published as the, as the Transportation Improvement Program or the TIP, and some other long-range planning type roles. We're here in kind of an intersection of those, of those things. So we're here as the transit experts for the region. We're here as the planning role, but we're also here from an operational role. So it's, it's a little bit of a unique situation in that we have that all concentrated in one department, but it isn't the main transit operator, which is Metro Transit, or we work very closely with Metro Transit. So that's one distinction within that council for who we are. So within, within our plan, within the Transit Investment Plan that Bradley manages, we use market areas, so we do identify the region and kind of identify transit market areas. That's based on population and employment density. It's based on automobile ownership and availability, and it's based on intersection density. And from that, we create sort of a composite index of what types of transit services make sense where. So Carver is right on the border between what's called Market Area 4 and Market Area 5. The difference between those essentially being where it makes sense to run commuter express service or not. And in Market Area 5, generally, it would just be demand response dial-a-ride type service. We'll talk about, we'll talk about that. Market Area 4 generally could, you know, could support express bus type of service. All of these, the plan recognizes, are determined on a case-by-case basis. But the Market Area guidance sort of tells us what may or may not make sense. The actual experience of operating it is something we have incurred, and that is, you know, a lot more instructive for, for how we proceed.
Is there a population size that brings you from three to four and on?
It's more about density of population. So we're doing the analysis at a pretty granular level. It's a census block group, so it's, the size is about a neighborhood.
Okay.
And so, you know, when you look at like the map that's on Charles' paper there, those are all kind of conglomerated together from a bunch of smaller spaces and it's, I'd have to recall the actual figure from the plan. We analyzed like what's the median kind of population density. If I'm remembering, Market Area 2, which is kind of more like Richfield, kind of south of Minneapolis, that's like 11 people an acre, and then it goes down from there. I'd have, I didn't look it up real quick while we're talking, but.
We can follow up on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so cars are the part of this equation. How many people operate vehicles?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you own, if you own a bunch of cars, you're very likely to use them. If you don't own a car, you're unlikely to use it. If you're, if you don't own a car, you're more likely to use a transit. It is more, you know, Market Areas 1, 2, and 3 are sort of the key application of a lot of planning decisions. When we get into the more express areas, it, to a certain extent, becomes about what's the minimum mass for a service to make sense. And in the park and ride, in the pre-COVID park and ride planning days, it was a couple hundred cars. So a couple hundred cars worth of people wanting to go to the same place at about the same time was the formula. And I think that's why the Carver Park and Ride is roughly 400 spaces. It was sort of built around this idea that that's, that's how you get to the level of a frequent all-day service or a frequent peak service, is a few hundred people going. If you have a larger facility closer, you often can operate more frequent service and then that has sort of a gravity effect. It pulls folks to slightly closer rims, so going to East Creek, going to the other Southwest stations. Probably a lot of what's happening because a higher level of service can be provided because there's more people. So it's, that's sort of, those are sort of the planning tensions that played out. It's been very different the last five years. So a lot of the things that worked five years ago don't really work anymore. It's more in Metro Transit's plans and I can't speak to Southwest's plans, but it's pushed more toward concentrating park and ride facilities, concentrating service at larger facilities that people drive to. Building new facilities was more about relieving overcapacity issues at those facilities that are a little bit closer in. That no longer exists because of the way that demand has changed in the last few years. So it's, long way of saying it's all sort of individual case by case. I think the experience we've seen is that there's not a ton of demand, especially the last, you know, since, since COVID, but services continue to be available and generally it involves across the region, not just here, driving a little further to a location that has more frequent peak service. What we do operate is Transit Link, so that is a shared ride service that serves the parts of the metro area that don't have regular route transit, where it's infrequent or unavailable. So it's, it's a reservation-based dial-a-ride system. It operates on weekdays from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We operate it in, in MTS, but in our version, we are actually partnered with Carver and Scott Counties to operate it as one, one service that they call Smart Link that operates in both Carver and Scott.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So is Transit Link and Smart Link the same thing?
Same thing, yeah. It's sort of the flavor of Transit Link that Scott brands with Carver. We operate through intergovernmental agreement to Scott County. Carver County pays Scott County to include some of the services here, but a lot of ours, of our funding with Scott is actually both Carver and Scott. So that's, that's how we fund it. There have been about 1,000 rides from Carver home addresses on Transit Link in the last 18 months, so.
How many are city?
Uh, city, city. So I'm just talking city of Carver, about 1,000 rides.
About 1,000.
Yeah, right around 1,000 in 18 months. So 50 to 80 a month. There's some seasonality. 90 for, 95% of that is from three users. So one, one person accounts for about half of those rides. I don't know who it is. I don't know where they're coming from. I don't know where they're going. But just to give you a flavor of the usage, it's very useful to a few people, is the current condition of it. So if there's ideas of how we can make it more useful, it's certainly something we welcome. We talked with Carver County about a year ago about, you know, what are the, as, as we had new sales tax money, as they had new sales tax money that is available for transit services, you know, what locally, within, you know, the county level would be useful. They identified that, you know, maybe night or weekend hours on Transit Link would help, but the nearest term thing was expanding a one-day-a-week circulator route between Laconia and Norwood Young America. So that's something we implemented in partnership with them based on that, based on the FID that launched last October.
Is the ridership on that?
I'm not sure. We've heard that, you know, it's something people are interested in. We have a low fare on it. It's a $1 fare compared to, you know, roughly $4 for regular Transit Link. But the idea was that people to do shopping and things like that had, they couldn't do that in Norwood Young America anymore and going to Laconia was the, was the answer we were able to come up with.
Are there restrictions on Smart Link? Like, it's not being utilized out here. Why?
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Is it just weekdays?
You, it's, it's a weekday service. You reserve it. You reserve it ahead of time. If there's a fixed route solution available for your trip, it will connect you to fixed route. So if you called and you wanted to go downtown Minneapolis, they would bring you to a Southwest Transit hub and you'd connect. If you were going to Cologne, they would bring you to Cologne.
Yeah.
I.
And you'll go wherever? You'll take me from my home?
Yep, yep.
To the grocery store?
It's general public. It's, it's for anybody. It's an accessible vehicle. And I think they're, it's not an on-demand service like Southwest Prime is.
Okay.
So that's, you know, that could be a factor in it.
Tell me what that means.
You would.
I know what on-demand means, but like.
Yeah, you would reserve your trip, you know, by calling somebody and setting up your trip or.
How far in advance?
Great question. I think, one, there is some same-day service availability, but generally, it's, it's up to a week ahead of time. You can schedule a ride.
So you're typically, people are typically scheduling 24 hours to a week in advance?
Right, yeah.
So for, so Southwest Prime is subsidized by us, the city. Transit Link is subsidized by the county?
It's funded by the state.
By the state?
The state motor vehicle sales tax.
Okay, so the counties don't kick in?
Oh, the counties have bought up services. So for example, Scott County operates weekend service because they paid, they were, so we operate a base level of service and then they paid county money to increase the level of service.
Okay, so they're county private tax. Does cities don't pay directly into any of those things?
No, no, no. This is, this is a regionally operated service that's funded with state funds.
Okay.
Isn't it a revelation to us that there is no special need required to use this? I thought there was, too.
Yes, for me it is.
Yeah, so it's a general public service.
No, because I'm, I'm thinking of Metro Mobility and there is, I mean, for that, but I, for me, it's a surprise that it's up there and available to our residents.
Yeah, we will follow up with some additional information. It is an available service, you know, I think.
Sort of like in my case.
Yeah.
Thanks for barring the traffic.
When, when it comes down to it, you know, a lot of times if folks have a car available, it might just, they might find it more convenient to use the car.
Yeah, but we have a high level of.
But, you know, not everybody does that and.
We have a high level of prime usage in our community for which we, we, the city pays.
Yep.
Three-quarters of that cost right now, those prices, we're anticipating to double if not triple. So like, if we could say, hey, we've got another option for you.
Yep.
Did, you mentioned that Scott County kind of subsidizes and puts the weekend service into play through their financing of those costs. into play through their financing of those costs. Has Carver County ever expressed any interest in?
What we've done so far has been to introduce that circulator route.
Okay, but that's it? And that's only been going since last year, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So yeah, so the city leads two services, as you know. There's the, there's the grant funded Express Plus service where Southwest is extended. And there's the Southwest Prime that, so the grant funding is running out. Southwest Prime continues, as I understand it, that's supported by your general fund levy and then you contract with Southwest for that. So Southwest, just to, just to clarify, Southwest is a joint powers board of Eden Prairie, Chaska, and Chanhasan. They were permitted in the 1980s, when the transit system was almost exclusively funded by property taxes, the, they were granted permission to like remove themselves from the Metro Transit's predecessor system, the MTC, and operate their own transit service. And so 12 cities altogether did that. So Plymouth, Maple Grove, these three cities, and then a number in Scott Dakota County. And, you know, which operate as MBTA. Southwest Transit is, you know, convenient way to think about it is that's Chanhasan, Chaska, and Eden Prairie operating as cities together. It's, so they formed a transit agency of their joint powers as given to them by the legislature in the 80s. Since then, property tax is no longer the basis for funding. It's state motor vehicle sales tax, it's federal revenue, it's regional sales and use tax. So the, the window for that opting out really closed in the 80s. And so we had, we worked with these other transit providers that are comprised of joint powers of those cities that have them. So certainly there, they've got discretion in how they operate. We are the funder of them as the council through a mix of primarily motor vehicle sales tax, but also the sales and use tax, federal funds, and some local property levy funds. We're going through a process right now of how we allocate funds amongst transit providers between the council and the 12 replacement services. So that's, that's a work in progress that is underway. Might be a convenient time to switch to talk about the transit taxing district. So in state law, the council has discretion to extend service beyond the taxing district boundaries, but has to determine, you know, how the law is, how we deem necessary and advisable, basically to get compensated for the cost of that service if it's going beyond the transit taxing district boundary. As you know, Carver's not in it, Chaska is. That's where the, that's where the border is here. We can't levy that tax unless a city not in it have agreed with us on a service expansion plan. And so kind of the basic process of how it would work is we'd have some conversations like this one, the city and council would decide and agree on what a plan might look like. You would request, you would petition us to include, be included in the, in the debt service levy. So the taxing district is a capital debt service levy. It's not used for operations. We can only, we can't, we can't spend that levy money on anything but debt service. So every other year, we get permission from the legislature to issue transit bonds. We then levy this debt service across, across the, you know, better part of the Twin Cities population to service that debt. So you would ask us to include that. I think normally we'd need to know by roughly June 1st, but we haven't, we haven't nailed that down for this conversation. If it's something that remains of interest, certainly we would. We would then include you in our, within our proposed levy. We tell the Department of Revenue how much we're levying and where we're levying it. And then they figure out how much each, you know, each, each property in, in city owes. We would then execute a funding agreement over whatever transit service we would be agreeing to. And then if you're, if it's a situation where we're providing funding to you and you're hiring Southwest, for example, you would then go hire Southwest to do that. It probably would make the most sense for us to work with the city and the city to work with its provider, whether that's us or Southwest or somebody else, versus us sort of managing a side service for you on your behalf, just because it could get kind of complicated. In terms of the numbers behind this, so the overall process is you ask us to extend the tax levy, we would do that. And then we have some agreement for, for what that means for you. What is the funding source? Because it's capital only, most likely, it's not that, like the council would give you some other funding source. Perhaps it'd be equivalent to what we levy in your, in your city. And then that would augment Transit Link that we provide and, you know, whatever else you'd like to do. In terms of amounts, Carver in 2024 had what, went just over $1 billion in taxable market value. So that's a big milestone. You're growing very quickly. The numbers were very different when this was looked at about 10 years ago.
Very different.
That is about two tenths of a percent of the region's taxable market value. Our debt service levy is about 55.3 million in 2025. So on that, on that level, it's around 100,000 annually that we would be levying. But that may be a whole region metric. When we compare the rate that we levy, so our average that we use, and I'll get to Carver average in a second, a $300,000 home would see about a $47 tax impact from the, from the transit levy. So at $1 billion of tax capacity, that's about 150,000. So this is all to say, I don't know the specific number, but it's somewhere north of 100,000, probably as much as 150,000 that would be levied in Carver. And on your prior 2025 city budget, the $425,000 average home would correspond to about $67, according to this stance.
Was the whole price on that one, do you use?
425. That's what I use as the taxable value. The market value is a little bit higher with exclusions.
So can I just make sure I've got this straight? So we say, potentially say we are interested in.
Yep.
Joining the taxing district. We've got a plan where it says we're going to do routes here, there, and the other place. And then the value that we get in turn, like, I guess my question is, are there any extra, other fees that we pay?
Yeah.
You for that service?
It, I mean, it really depends on what the structure is. I mean, kind of the hypothetical is we'll extend this tax into Carver and then we'll grant you funds equivalent to that.
Okay.
And then, and then you can only use it on transit services, but, you know, but feel free to define those services. We'll write down what that is.
We would potentially get $1 to $150,000 worth of transit services.
Yep, yep.
Is it only money derived from that? Are there other sources of money, federal monies or anything else, that makes that a larger pot of money to us?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that, it is a possibility. That's how we've approached it elsewhere. I think the difference is that Transit Link is, is the service we otherwise provide. So that's sort of the motor vehicle sales tax funds. In other cities that have joined the district, it's been combined with some motor vehicle sales tax, but for a very specific service plan. And now actually, most of those have ended.
True.
So Columbus, Forest Lake, and Maple Plain joined that years ago. It had fixed route service for a while. Those routes were no longer viable. They're still in the taxing district, but there isn't service, fixed route service in those communities because it was, it was really based on, you know, the viability of that fixed route service. So those were augmented by other funds. This, this is all to say, based on the council's market area potential and based on the history of, of service here, what would be guided regionally is service like Transit Link. What would be above that would come into the picture from this, from this transit taxing district conversation. The other thing I'll add about that is that joining the district doesn't net additional funds. It only spreads our levy across a bigger area. So the dedication of funds through joining the taxing district is a reduction in otherwise available council funds because we're, you know, so it's a slight reduction, it's a tiny reduction in everybody's property taxes to service this debt and dedicate equivalent funds to that, to Carver. So it doesn't create more money. Instead, the council, you know, might entertain dedicating a portion of funds equivalent to the levy as the exchange.
I don't know if you can answer this question, but let's say we, we do this. You said we would set up a separate relationship with Southwest Transit. By way of doing this, how does that impact Southwest Transit? Or does it, beyond just that money going to them? Because now they're picking up additional population. Does it?
Yeah.
Give them revenue coming from other sources?
Yeah, so when they operate transit service, they report to the federal government and would earn, earn funds based on the service miles. So every, every mile of service they operate for Carver related service, they would get somewhere on the order of 70 cents.
That includes prime?
Of federal funds, including for, including for prime.
So the net gains of that is more than that 150 or 100,000 we would be directing?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Depending on the, depending on the service.
Yeah.
And how it's, how it's factored in. But the council doesn't receive those funds. Southwest would receive it as the provider. We do receive funds for Transit Link's miles that we would operate regionally. But that's, you know, that, that helps us with the capital cost of that service.
Oh, sorry. Brett, could you remind me what we spend about approximately on prime each year?
We were budgeting about $50,000.
Yeah.
So you use, I think it was Maple Plain as an example of they're in the taxing district, but they don't have service.
Correct, not any longer.
So once we're in, we can't get out of the taxing district?
Well, it's a little more complicated than that because we would have a service agreement that relates to the tax.
Okay.
These changes just became permanent a month or two ago in terms of those other routes that had been suspended for several years, but were suspended, not terminated. Now they're terminated. So some of those conversations could begin. They still have the infrastructure associated with joining those, you know, that you can park and pool at those locations. They're looking at various housing opportunities with those locations. But it's, you know, it's unlikely that fixed route service will return soon based on how much things have changed in the last 10 years.
Thank you.
So as you can tell, I'm not trying to sell you. But I do want you to understand what it, what it could look like.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your willingness to let us in and ask questions.
Yeah, no, no.
Just for clarity purposes, Charles, can you, we talked about this a little bit in our meeting, but could that transportation plan include, instead of fixed road bus service, could that be a funding mechanism for microtransit or the Southwest Prime?
I think it could. I mean, that, that's the kind of service that we could, you know, define and agree to. That, you know, I think the difference is that when you're levying it yourself, you can, it's not an all or nothing to a certain extent, whereas joining the district probably involves calculating, you know, it's about this much, figure 150,000 or so. And that's the, that's what you have to work with. But you could levy, right now, you could levy 45, 50, 75, I mean, you know, whatever you want versus asking us to levy a fixed amount. And then you have it back, but you can only use it on transit purposes. And do you have, you know, do you have sufficient demand? Or do you expect sufficient demand to reach that level? And all of this is new policy ground for us because before the model was, build a park and ride, it fills up, build a park and ride, it fills up, build a park and ride, it fills up. And so, you know, we haven't had a, joined the taxing district conversation with anybody for many years because the model underneath it has changed so much. You know, the other thing going on, I mentioned that we, that we were working with Transit Link, kind of, or a Transit Link circulator with Carver County. The county, you could talk to the county about transit funding availability. 17% of the transit, the transportation sales and use tax, three quarters cent sales tax in the region that was, that started in 2023. 17% of that is off the top to the counties. 17% of that, 17%, is available for transit purposes. So 41% is for roadway reconstruction. That doesn't involve expansion. 41% is for active transportation. And 17% is for some combination of transit, complete streets, and offsets to a separate climate law that is a longer story. But, you know, of that, the county could pay 17% on transit. That's about $1 million a year. I don't know what they are planning to use it on, but they can't, they can't take that 17% and spend it on, you know, road expansion. It's limited to purposes in statute, transit, complete streets, climate offsets.
Sorry, questions?
Believe it or not, Charles, we've been going ahead on.
I will say, comment anecdotally again, block party this weekend, so I got lots of feedback from my neighbors about everything. It was great. It sounds like my neighbors that use transit drive to Chaska and poke in Chaska because we just don't have regular enough service from Carver Station.
How many would you say that is?
We use your sample size neighborhood.
We're in Meridian Fields, so we've got 150 homes.
How many of your neighbors?
My neighbors, I think only one of them was talking to me about it, but she said that there were about six or eight people that will occasionally.
Yeah.
Drive to Chaska and take the bus.
My question, I know that this is a variable, but it, maybe there isn't, maybe this is too hard to answer, but for 100 or 150,000 dollars a year, what does that look like in terms of bus service? Because I think we're getting prime for kind of a deeply discounted rate right now. I feel like, does that look like fixed service? And then like, maybe a part B to that question is like, what are your thresholds for discontinuing service?
It, I mean, it would really depend on your structure with Southwest and what their cost structure looks like in a way that I'm just not familiar with. It's not, you know, in our, in, in MTS's service, we deliver an hour of service for, you know, we'll round up and say it's $150 an hour. So it would be, you know, 1,000 hours of service, which is, you know, a bus for half the day or so. You know, it's not, it's not a huge amount of service.
Sure.
It's.
But it would maybe be morning and afternoon, even rush hours. Okay.
For an increment, not to Minneapolis.
Okay.
Is the, is the thing to keep in mind.
Okay. So what does that increment look like? Does it Chaska or is it Eden Prairie or is it going?
It would really depend on a service plan that.
So your service number is. I'm starting for an hour, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And the buses are going to look like what I would think about if I went into Minneapolis or St. Paul?
It, I mean, it all depends on the, on the service that.
Okay.
You know, I think if.
Fixed route, I'm thinking.
What's, what's unusual here is that under a normal circumstance, like Carver joining the taxing district would make you part of Metro Transit service area and then Metro Transit would be your service provider and then it would look like that bus. Because of the geography in play, it likely would be cost prohibitive to do that, just pulling the bus out from Bloomington uses half the time. So, you know, contracting with Southwest for that kind of service probably makes the most sense or something like that. And we offer a Transit Link with small buses. They look more like the metro mobility buses.
Yep.
And, you know, that, that's running all over Carver County and Scott County. And it's, you know, it's just a different service structure with a, with a smaller, lower cost vehicle. I should note metro mobility because we're on this topic. The metro mobility service area is defined by the legislature. So that's, that's defined in statute for where metro mobility serves. Joining the tax, taxing district does not extend metro mobility service into, into a city. Only legislative change. Only legislative change to the metro mobility service area does that. The state as of July 1st is wholly responsible for the cost of metro mobility, so they have discretion over, even more discretion now, where it goes based on the funding that they're responsible for.
And I guess I don't know, are we in metro mobility's area?
No.
According to the map, Chaska is closest.
Chaska does.
But not even Victoria, just Chaska.
Right.
I guess kind of going back to my question of when you determine that a route isn't viable anymore. We're looking at reports where we had 104 passengers last month.
Yeah.
And that is the lightest month that we've had this year.
104 in what?
Rides. Our fixed routes.
Fixed routes to Southwest.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But even then, looking back, and I'm looking at a table that goes back to January of 2022, I think our highest route has got to be, or highest month may have been 203 passengers a couple of years ago, exactly two years ago.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I don't know.
It feels like we don't have a, transportation did not bounce back in Carver post-COVID.
Our, our past heuristic would indicate that to be viable, you'd want about that many a day.
A hundred a day.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think we had that many when we were doing like.
Two, two hundred a day.
At our best. I don't think we were doing that well in June of 2019.
Right.
Right?
Forever.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is kind of, what I hear you saying is based on the data, there isn't a viability in the short term for fixed bus service on a car, is that correct?
That's, yeah.
So any transportation plan that this city council would want to endeavor would be focused on micro transit, whether that's through directly through Metro Council and Smartlink or through prime, you know, Southwest?
Yep. Yeah, we're expanding our micro areas, but generally, you know, our minimum size that we're looking at is a five bus operation, which is in our, based on our hours and things like that, nominally about a million and a half dollar operation for, we opened one in Waverly, we opened one in Roseville, we're opening one in Bloomington on August 15th and then in Lane on August or September 16th. So that's sort of the geograph, our next geography is in somewhat, somewhat larger but suburban areas that don't have a lot of fixed route service or don't have high performing fixed route service.
When I'm looking at that G number that we have, I mean, that, because it's, it says passengers, that's the one way trip, that's.
That's a single ride.
Yes, so, I mean, even if, let's just say they rode 30 days, which obviously there's not that many, but it doesn't even, that's like two people a day, two or three people a day that are riding them out of here. That's not much, especially, I mean, if we're looking at.
There were 21 business days in June.
So maybe three or four.
Yeah, a day.
Those are some pretty empty buses.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's frequently why the operations grant, isn't it?
Last of the months it has. Well, yeah. COVID not having any service for a number of months.
But looking at the cost of what it would be per year for the levy, that's, thank you, I'm sorry to say, but the, it doesn't, I know you're not trying to sell us, but it just, that seems like a happy number for two to three people.
But Smartlink, we can continue to use and.
Yep. It's available to you.
There's like no route that's too short. I could get a ride from my house that's less than a mile away to come down here to a meeting.
A quarter mile minimum is the walking distance that we would, we would expect.
So you'd have to go around the block.
Well, no, looks longer than four.
Yeah, a quarter mile walk.
That's fine.
I can take two literally all the way up.
Yeah, what am I supposed to do? I'm gonna have to drive me a circle of friends.
The history of, the history of this program may be, may be helpful to know. This came from amalgamating a lot of county and nonprofit based services that officially were general public services that anyone could ride, but if it has a name like senior community services, it doesn't feel like it's available to you as a member of the general public. And that was not true. And so, so part of why, why the council consolidated some of these things while still partnering locally so that there's, there's some local influence over it is so that it was clearer that this is a general, a generally available transit service for places that don't have the demand for fixed route service.
All right. One? Thank you for answering all my questions. I really appreciate your patience and willingness. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
What, what instead of 212 do we take to get out of here?
Old 212.
Old 212.
So go down, is it County Road 63 now?
One.
Flying Cloud Drive 61, Flying Cloud Drive.
It's faster to go to Shakopee. Get on 169 and then go all the way.
I don't know, I went, I went.
I've done that several times.
I went pretty quick.
Maybe better.
There's the ways app.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, but no, I this morning, Ways routed me Flying Cloud Drive up and then you pick up 212 or 494 in Prairie is the way Ways took me this morning.
You can shoot out to Chaska and 169.
Good luck. Good odds, being your paper.
Many happy that, yeah, further questions, feel free to pass them along, we'll, we'll bring them on.
Okay. Thank you.
I can get the answer to your question, by the way.
Yeah.
The median density in transit market area three is five people per acre and in four it's three and a half.
And we're like three, three and a half. All right, um, gonna just keep going because I know that we got a bunch of. But, um, next is the draft 10-year staffing plan update.
Can we close this or?
You can leave.
Can I get the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was incredibly helpful, Brent. Thank you for putting that together. Any lingering questions I had about the transit taxing district would benefit to Carver or answer.
Yeah, it's never sure what you're having, like, okay, if each one of us knew that we could get 50 people to ride a day. We're just gonna recruit riders.
Smartlink could play itself as prime for us. That's where I'm going. Yeah, that's where I'm thinking.
That social media message tomorrow.
Because it gets you to the transit station in Chaska.
There's gotta be something there though, like, why aren't people using it?
I didn't really, yeah, I didn't realize either.
We didn't realize this, so how would we?
It's gonna be really hard to break people of the Southwest prime on demand.
Not when it goes in there.
That's true.
I think, yeah. But it's just a prime example of the transportation is not very well coordinated and.
Yeah.
And also communication.
And the other thing will be night and weekend service because they only do 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday to Friday, was what he said.
If the county could pick that up.
I know.
And if only we had a county commissioner coming to our meeting.
Yeah.
Tonight, I mean, sorry, Ron, um, you have 10-year staffing.
But sometimes that just means you have to plan ahead. You don't guess or just go, oh, I think I want to go right now. Come to me. I like, I have a. I understand. I'm just telling you, that's, it's gonna be hard to break people of that habit.
Okay, for the real this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mary and Council. So this is the first of several presentations that I would call ingredients into your 10-year long-term financial plans. We have a conversation on staffing, but also streets, parks, utilities, infrastructure and facilities. And really the essence of this is to provide, provide the snapshot. And if you are okay with that outline, that gets kind of fed into the 10-year financial plan machine and then you can see kind of the impacts by year of these different investments that you'd be making. So we're also changing our format a bit this year. We rely a lot on PowerPoint to make these presentations and kind of get into it. And this year we're transitioning into more of like a full report with the idea that we think we can provide a little bit more context for the city council. So just some backgrounds, some plan goals are listed there. I think the biggest thing I want to point out, I'm just not gonna, I'm not gonna read them, but we're only addressing full-time position ads here. So that seasonal part-time ads, we're gonna take a year-by-year basis, we'll recognize kind of trend lines and so on and so forth. Our process was, we're pretty deliberate. We did an initial solicitation, prepared a draft, had a critical review. We all met in here and went through it. Everyone kind of made their case using the, frankly, kind of the premise that, you know, if Andrew, because of our budget and our limited resources, if Andrew needs something in 2028 in public services, that might impact what Vicki or Lynn needs in a different part of the city. And so we tried to create kind of a, a shared space, recognizing that there'll have to be priorities and decisions made. We went through a couple of rounds of that, so right now we're in that presentation of that draft plan. In essence, our seven-step discipline summary going from that population of what we believe by year end '26 to be around 7, 8, 900 to, based on projections, '12, '08 and 2035. So a population of 62%, of a 62% increase over that 10 years. I really focused on not exceeding that amount for the increase in full-time staff over that same period. So you can see we're slightly below the increase in community size. Some additional summary pieces, you can see our current state of full-time positions by department out of the sheriff's contract as well. And then planning completion for that 10 years from '26 to '35. And then I think a maturing of our plan. So not to say it was overbuilt, but in 2023, that was our first kind of 10-year snapshot. And as you can see, by year, we've kind of gone down with the number of positions that are identified in that. And I think that shows kind of an evolution, not just of where we've come in the last three years, but kind of understanding what we might need, the feedback that we've gotten from the council. And, and then now that we are looking at that 10-year, we can see some, some of the trends that are going forward. And I, I would point out to like, one of the things that like, I think has been, shows a great example of how well this plan has worked is two years ago, we had shown adding a full-time deputy in 2025. And now based on kind of that continuing discussion, you'll notice that that deputy position has moved back to 2030. And again, you know, we're gonna track this annually, year by year, but you know, Commander Wollene signed off on that, recognizing that, you know, things change from year to year. So getting into the full report, this is the existing plan, existing 10-year plan. You may remember that we were converting that mechanics position to a utilities position with kind of Andrew's line of sight, recognizing that the mechanics position is best added at whatever point the community decides to build a public services facility, just because of the space requirements. And with that, it might be be considering or contracting for that service until we reach that point. Moving forward to some of the.
Can I ask one really quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we had talked about July 1st for that mechanics. Fine, if we're going to wait, we think that's the appropriate way to go. But I thought our contract was going away with whatever mechanic service we were using.
Yeah, we don't have a, currently we don't have a contract with any mechanic.
Okay.
I don't know when that expired, but.
So where do our things go now? Any work done?
Depends on what's wrong with it. So they get shipped off to different places.
Just a local body shop or?
Local or dealership or implement dealer, just depends on the type of equipment and what's wrong with it, so.
Okay. And do we have any major ones that we've had in the last year that?
I can't think of any, but that's not to say that.
Yeah, right, I would. I mean, I'm just seeing, is there something that happened? And we have like these big chunks, right? Where we're like saying, okay, if we were gonna pay this much, but now we're, you know, if we're having to farm it out to other businesses to do it, are we already reaching that mechanics amount? That's all I was looking for.
Let's see. Yeah, and the problem with, in my opinion, with the mechanic position right now is there's nowhere for them to work. Because the equipment would have to move out of the building to get that piece of equipment that you need to work on in the building. And then it's a lot of setup and take-down time that's wasted. They don't have an office that would be, usually the mechanic is working in the shop. They have an office that they can get too easily. We don't have that space for them. Tool space would be an issue. Most mechanics come with their own tools, so we might not have a spot to put those. So at this time, I would think our money we've spent on the utility operator.
Yeah, and just for, just to highlight that, like, when Andrew started, like, my big push was like, you can start on hiring that mechanic. And it was Andrew and his perspectives and conversations with the team that came back and said, basically just what you heard, you know, that we're not ready at this time.
Are we doing minor things in the shop? Like, what would that include?
We're doing oil changes and we're doing everything that we can do in-house, we do in-house.
Okay.
Which would, is gonna be a similar story. When you get a mechanic, sometimes when the plow trucks break, it has to go out anyways. It has to go to Boyer or, or wherever to get work done. So it's not like we're gonna be able to fix those big diesel engines in-house all the time anyways.
Okay.
So then here's kind of the plan overview. I'm gonna run through it by year. One of the things that was introduced early in the document is, you know, there's kind of five levels of what we call a planning cycle. So the, the first two years are that annual budget, like, things are, you know, popping up that, you know, we really need to do that justification piece and also budget impact. That second stage is that critical review, see if we have some items listed, including that mechanic. But then also introducing this transitional and conceptual that, in the same way that I mentioned that our staff additions have gone down, you know, it's hard to look out five years and know exactly what you're gonna need. And so we have concepts that we've listed here, but recognizing that some of these likely or almost definitely will change. And then we added a kind of a monitoring piece that, you know, based on what we're spending through consultants or needs that, you know, we think this is of interest, but it might pop up if we don't want to like be in a position next year where I say, hey, we need this GIS specialist actually in two years. And you're like, well, we were, you didn't even mention that last year. So this kind of gives you a line of sight to some of the things that we're thinking about. So again, for plan year 26, we have the internship program and contracted deputy. I do think there's some benefits for that internship program, but one of the big pieces that, you know, my editorial comment and that I shared with the team is that we have some generational type of facilities and infrastructure investments that we're making. And although an internship program would have some benefit, if everything's a priority, nothing is, and so that's one that we felt that we could push out. Then contracted deputy. If you have talked to some folks in leadership positions at the sheriff's office, and you might even hear this from Commissioner Thiege tonight, it sounds like they're gonna really struggle with vacancy coming up in the sheriff's office. So the idea of adding another position when we're down, I would say more down than what like they typically are. And then also just based on like what we're seeing for like calls, there doesn't seem to be a justification. So we have that, pushed that out to 2030. But again, that's something that based on development, based on, I would say, like community conversation, that that's just gonna be, have to be looked at every year. The hardest part with that is it's such a, it's such a big add, so we probably looking to do that in like a phase approach where you, you know, add that in a July of one year and then fully fund it the next. Moving to 2027, with that addition, with the conversion of that mechanics position into a utilities technician position, you know, we're still tracking on that one technician per 1,000 residents. There are probably a dozen different ways that you could put that together, but we've been using that fairly successfully. And at the time, based on Andrew and Paul and Jordan's recommendations, we'll make a decision whether or not that needs to be utilities technician or a general technician. They kind of work across departments, but there is some specialty related to that. And they'll also continue to monitor part-time positions. But with that add in '25, we feel like we could push that plan year back from '27, which also then creates this kind of like, I would say, budget capacity or levy capacity in '26 and '27 as we're starting to try to build towards. as we're starting to try to build towards larger projects in the community. Moving forward to twenty eight, we had a communication specialist. We do think that a combination of software upgrades, training and consultant support, we can meet those ongoing communication needs. We don't feel like we have the overall capacity to add a full time position where they would have to do other things to kind of make their work week complete. I would say probably the biggest change that you're seeing is moving the fire chief's position up from twenty thirty to this July one start year in twenty twenty eight, so about by a year and a half. If you get into kind of the details, really, I would offer that the need for a fire chief has probably been out there for decades. Fundamentally, like the culture, the way fire departments were created is through volunteers and community resources. But the amount of administrative work, not like administrative as in like sending out letters, but like filing reports, following up with residents, et cetera, that we're asking folks to do on kind of a part time schedule is inconsistent with how the city runs every other department. You have an operating budget of over a half a million dollars. You have, it's the biggest department by number with thirty three employees. And so, you know, initially, the fire department or former Chief Trimble and Deputy Chief Walsh, or now interim Chief Walsh, were kind of pushing for something familiar. But when we talked about it, the practicality of it is, it's probably gonna take a year plus just to put the position together and figure out how you'd do the hiring process, et cetera. And so, and just because of the budget impact, we wanted to kind of measure the implementation strategy. You can see here, you can, how we compare to other cities in Carver County as it relates to adding that position. We also did a peer city review, so you can see kind of how we stack up with our other peer cities. And then a review of calls, time spent and then expenditure budget. I will note, I had this up here earlier, the city's already spending on a combination of these two positions, about sixty thousand dollars. And so you're really not, although it's significant, you're not biting off the whole hundred and fifty thousand dollars in in one bite. You, you're already making a commitment. Those numbers are gonna go down for the deputy chief if you have someone here on a full time basis.
Quick question.
Oh.
Okay, twenty twenty eight, when is Lenzon property supposed to be built out or begin building and then build out? Because that's how many, five hundred or three hundred acres, five hundred acres?
Yeah, it's like three hundred. You know, they're gonna go through the planning process in the remainder of this year in twenty six. I would speculate that the first homes would be built, starting to be built in the spring of twenty seven. As far as like build out and I just, that'd be a wild speculation. You know, anywhere from five to seven years, I would speculate.
And the reason I'm saying this is because I I think this is a nice plan and I like this timing because right after this, we're gonna have, the southeast area is gonna be coming on. That Lenzon is a huge piece of property. It may say eighty eight hundred is estimated here, but a year after that, it's gonna be huge. And I'd rather not be behind the game on our emergency services. I'd rather be a step ahead of it.
You said the thought was gonna take a year, year and a half to formulate what that full time job looked like. Does Victoria or Laconia provide us a blueprint for that?
They do, yeah. I think frankly, all all of the cities do. And I'm.
Is twenty eight waiting too long?
I think you could probably do it sooner if you said, hey, we want to get this done sooner. Part of this, in my calculus, is like a budget condition, but also kind of normalizing the thought of of taking a department that is not used to like full time, if they have full time leadership, but it's like, when you're operating under a part time structure, you know, there's, there's just gonna be little, I would say, like characteristics that are gonna change. And.
That's kind of my worry, right? To Christie's point, we're gonna grow quickly and to have that structuring place of working at that time.
And I would like, I'd love to be in a position where we could spend, like if the council said, okay, we're in this spot to like start a framework for cultivating leadership beyond kind of what we're doing now, so that we could create some, a strong internal candidate pool. Because I, when I look at some of these cities, I think anecdotally, the biggest success stories come from the first chief being from the community and the department and transitioning and understanding the culture as opposed to bringing somebody in from another city or another part of the state and then having them be the first of everything, including just getting to know everybody. There are pros and cons to that, I'm sure, but that's kind of my internal thought process.
If we kept it twenty twenty eight, I mean, we're halfway to twenty twenty six right now, right? You'll take, you've got time then to talk to other things, get some of these procedures and how, what this is gonna look like in place. And then you can be ready to hire for someone to start twenty twenty eight. I mean, that actually, it seems like it's so far away, but the work that has to be done in between there. I think, I don't know, I think that, to me, the timing's right. I'm glad to see where it is. I'm glad it's not twenty thirty. I'm glad it's twenty twenty eight.
I've gone on record saying that I would support this for twenty twenty six if we decided that that was right. Although I think perhaps my second best choice would be twenty twenty eight, because you really laid this out really well about the rationale behind it.
Then moving on to twenty twenty nine, you know, we're continuing with that technician position, adding the mechanics position. You can see the justifications. And I can stop whenever you need me to. So that fire chief's position twenty thirty, you see pushed up. The contract deputy pushed back to July one. The planner and community events piece, and that's just kind of a broad term, obviously, but in essence, as you know, we have these huge developments. We have one technical planner on staff and so the amount of volume of work, and it's not just those big developments, it's the zoning questions, setbacks, chicken coop stuff, that kind of thing. We feel like the, we're gonna have a real need to support the community development director. But I also think it kind of coincides, like we're gonna be at the tail end or at the end of our partnership with Chester Recreation and we don't know what that looks like. But I do feel like, from what I have experienced, the council would want to continue like community events programming, whether it's farmer's market, community gardens, et cetera. And Brenda Good is kind of the Jack or Jane of all trades in that area right now. And so I think there is a nice kind of like fit that you can do some planning stuff, do some community events in a kind of a, you know, deputy community development kind of role, some GIS work that might be helpful to the public services. But we do think there is a kind of a strong area of need here in addition to, you know, communications that would be helpful for the city when you're talking about the type of explosive growth. So again, that's.
Would that position be better called like planner and community outreach or something?
It's, it's not, this isn't designated to like be the title it's just to describe. But we, yeah, we haven't gotten into what that title should be. It's just, we use the best way that we thought would describe it to you all and folks that might be reading it, so. But again, it's five years old, so thinking about like what our needs are will become more refined. Twenty thirty one, although we obviously could benefit by having an information technology position, the amount of money that we're spending on our service provider of one fifty thousand is maybe two thirds of the way towards like funding that, just the salary of that position. So we want to continue to monitor that position. But again, when you get to like priorities, we feel like having that technician, adding another administrative assistant is another use of those funds. Moving to twenty thirty two, these are, I would call them kind of basic needs related to technician, additional utility billing and accounting support, number of payroll, number of accounts receivable and payable, accounts and utility billing. We want to do a certain amount of cross training to help by having that specialist. As we get further and kind of monitoring these needs are conceptual, we wanted to earmark that. Twenty thirty three, this is largely or almost exclusively based on the number of new housing starts. One of the great things with this position is it's, it's filled from building permit fees. So whatever you add it, you're gonna have a revenue justification that will meet that need. Twenty thirty four, that's when we get into that communication specialist, whatever that means. I know that seemed like, when I think of twenty thirty four, I feel like it's like from the future.
What's the path for your council?
Yeah, so we're, you know, getting away from kind of that management analyst idea. And I mentioned this kind of in another area with the kind of the development of administrative services. I think there's different ways that we can accommodate some of those needs. Public services technician, again, considering that ratio of one technician per one thousand residents. We have a strong kind of leadership umbrella as that department grows. You know, you're probably gonna see needs even probably further specialized, probably not within the confines of this ten year plan. But Andrew and I have had like preliminary discussions about like right now, what's, you know, general, which is streets, parks, facilities, everything and then like water and sewer, but you might see that expand to like a third arm of like parks, a park specialty area where you have a, you know, staff assigned to parks and facilities or grounds with a superintendent and technicians under that role. Again, not identified here, but something that we're monitoring. And then finally, contracted deputies. So that's the new plan year, so not compared to anything. But if we're following that kind of five year increment, if we're following kind of a general rule of thumb of how Victoria has grown, their contracted deputies, this would coincide with that. So I know that's a ton of information all at once. So I'll go back to the summary if there's anything that you want me to kind of dig down a little bit deeper on. With your support, this would be the ingredients that we would give to the Northland team to answer to the long term financial plan.
Because of the time, I think that we can give you feedback during the regular meeting. Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Because I have just a couple of thoughts, but I, we're already at two minutes into our break period. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A mega motion, Jerry.
Josh, the council member, Preshman, for the second, second by council members here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The same side.